Chair of the Alvin Clang Board calling the meeting to order at 6:32. Let's do quick introductions.
Morris West, Vice Chair.
Amalia Dorris, I'm chairman of the member.
And James Jerome.
Select Board Report.
Select Board Report, yeah.
Thank you. And I'll point Amalia as a voting member for this meeting in the excused absence of Curtis Coleman and Brian Bailey. So, let's go minutes for last month. May 12th. I can pull them up if anyone needs to, or if everyone has a chance to read and review.
I read them. There seems to be some font issue with some of, and I don't know if it's just my phone, but there's like, towards the bottom it says something like the, it scrambled, at least on my, you know, there's some of the dates, like where it says the 10th, but yeah, it looks like it's fine there.
Okay.
So, just add ED there.
A second time.
It doesn't make a difference, but I think it's just, yeah, the font on my phone just scrambled some stuff up.
All right.
But I, I make a motion to approve this is.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. All right. Okay, all right. Terms and Members, Morris West, you did get sworn in?
Got sworn in.
Thank you. James, you got sworn in?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. I think then we are all appointed. Good to know. Select Board Report.
Actually, the only thing that we're working on, I was looking at your list there, and the noise ordinance, we're writing to add in Jake Brakes or Engine Brakes, there's some verbiage discrepancy there, but we're working on that, and we should have more discussion on Wednesday. The meeting.
Okay.
So that's moving forward.
Is that a selectman? It's not an ordinance to go into the zoning ordinance, it's a selectmen's ordinance.
It's gonna be, I believe they have to go through the town to become, to the town meeting to become an ordinance.
Okay. So we have, there's a bunch of these, there's like vendor and, right? That were passed by the select board directly, or not passed by the select board, but.
We're double checking on that because some of us don't feel that the select board has, right?
The authority.
The authority to, to do that, so we're double checking on that before we move.
If may I make a comment, you know, in one of the webinar that I have taken about the planning board, they say that whatever is decided at the planning board level is law, and the only way to remove it or whatever, you have to go to court. But the select, the selectmen board has to have the town approval.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
So we believe we need to get this together, and then it'll be on the list for town meeting of next year. And I think the same with all these changes that we're looking at in a zoning.
Yep. So yeah, what's on the website is Board of Selectmen, a parking ordinance, alcohol ordering ordinance, speed limit, noise.
Right.
Posted roads, video recordings, and camping. Yeah, and I don't know the particulars of these, whether they went before the town, or they were just passed at the select board.
Right, and I'm not sure on each one, it would be different, I know there were some that were passed just by the select board.
Just by the select.
That is in question.
Yep. Okay. Amalia, thank you for attending the class and sharing what you learned. My understanding was for ordinances, the select board would, like, we're gonna review definitions, and we wanted to make some change to definitions of the zoning ordinance. We would vote if it is approved here, that doesn't make it approved for the ordinance, it just means that it still has to go to town and get voted on by the people, is my understanding, at town meeting to be approved.
I.
There are some things like street standards, we could totally do in-house, and that didn't, doesn't require town approval. But the zoning ordinance itself, my understanding is it does need to go before town meeting.
I mean, there is a discrimination, but I cannot tell you exactly without having my papers in front of me, because you know, all of this material is very new to me, you know, then I go over it as it comes, like if I'm reading the zoning ordinance, and I feel like, well, you know, what do you, you know, what is appropriate for the planning board and what is not appropriate, there is, tons of things that are, you know, it has to be the select board, but it's the town that I have to vote, and another, they always seem that I really, because I asked the question, and remember I asked the question, why the select, with decisions in the selectmen board are not as strong if they are not backed up by the town? And I got the answer, and while in here, you have to go to court. What we decided in here at this level, it goes to court. Yeah, I mean, it's a, that I remember, you know, because I say, write down this, yeah, because it's important to know that if he, you know, I don't know who is gonna decide the 40 miles per limit or the noise, but if he, it falls over our, you know, planning board authority, it's, we can decide, and it's, it's law in the town, yeah. While the select board need the town vote.
Right.
There are other things that the select board, you know, can vote and do among your members, and it goes, yeah.
Yeah.
But there are, there is discriminations here and there. But by any means, you know, I mean that, the book is like that, yeah, and the conferences are, you know, like two hours gonna have, so you know, yeah, yeah.
Well, the town administrator is reaching out to NHMA and asking those questions, what can and cannot the select board do with ordinances? Can we, is there certain types that we can vote on and pass?
Yep.
Or is not, does, do they all have to go through the town, which I think they all have to go through the town meeting, myself, but.
Yes, I don't.
There is, there is, I can call, you know, there is an office for consultation in the NH Association or meeting, whatever, that you can contact them, and I say, we have this, is this can be approved, I mean, whatever the question you want, and it's, but it is for free.
Elisa may have that answer already, alone, I would say.
Yeah, that's who Jim said they're contacting.
Yeah, okay, okay.
It's not free, we pay, we do pay dues, so.
You pay the dues.
The town's paid dues, and part of your dues is then you get the service of, you know, free legal consultation.
Yeah, well, I mean, the, all the webinars are free, I haven't paid anything.
Webinars are free.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Paid for part of our membership.
Yeah, yeah, then I'm, I'm taking a ride in there, or I am using them in the morning.
They're great webinars too, they're so informative.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the part that my understanding for planning board that we can do without going before the town is like site plan review, that process, so we can adjust the site plan review process in-house, it doesn't have to go before town. Subdivision regulations. You know, what are other? Those type, like, yeah, the driveway or road standards.
Right.
But the zoning ordinance has always been my understanding that that has to go before town, which is what we're talking about, so.
Okay.
All right, so, thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
So yeah, really, I think the next thing on the agenda is to talk about definitions. So let's do that, Jim, do you wanna leave?
Sure.
So may I have your email or your draft thing up here too, if you wanna use that as a?
Yeah, I've got it, I mean, but, so on that, everything in red there is the original definitions.
Yep.
I started with.
I don't see your email, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I.
Can you see up here Amalia on the screen? I can make it, I'll make it bigger.
If you make it bigger, yes. Oh, you sent me the email, and I read it in my telephone that is here? There it is. Okay, I can read that.
Yeah, so I changed that to further down, you'll see it in green, accessory dwelling unit. An accessory dwelling unit, ADU, is a second dwelling on one property, C section G, accessory dwelling units, in parentheses, ADUs. So then I went on to the question that we had last year was dwelling. And I think that's where our issue stemmed from, is what is a dwelling? So, I wrote a structural portion thereof providing complete and independent living, offering three or more, and that's the, I guess that's the key part that I put in there, was three or more amenities, whether it be sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. Just thinking, where do you draw the line? And if you look at each one of those amenities, someone may have a barn, and they have a sink, I mean, you need a sink to feed the animals and all that, they may have a restroom out there because they're working out there all day, or, you know, but if they were to have a kitchen out there with their restroom and the sinks, and then they put in some sleeping, then now you've created the dwelling. So that's why I went with three or more, I seem to draw the line in the sand and kept it kind of simple. Which are used in common by one or more persons. I may have some amendment dates on previous stuff. And then number A was residential dwelling unit, a dwelling unit used only for residential purposes. I think if, the more we read through some of these definitions, dwelling was used and then not used in certain places, and residential was used and then not used in different places, so as we go further, which I haven't dove that deep, we need to tie that all together as we go further down the ordinances.
Yep.
Let's see if I can get this back open. So in section G, scroll down a little bit, show on there, section G in red is what I changed. And I removed portion D of that, let's see, is that, am I doing this right? Oh, one second.
I don't find the section G, did you add that? Because I don't find it in here, I have A B, exception for locals. A B, A B C D.
Yeah, so under G, section two is A B C and then D.
Okay, yeah.
The ADU must provide independent living facilities for one or more persons containing the four elements of sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. I removed that because it's three or more, not four.
Okay. Am I correct in this where I'm at right now, what you're talking about?
Um, if you scroll down just a little bit more, right there, that, that D is what I thought we should remove. And.
What, replacing it with something, or just removing?
No, it was, it was kind of redundant. It's talking about an ADU and what it provides, and we just described that in section two, accessory dwelling unit. So I didn't feel we needed to rehash out what the ADU has, number one, it doesn't have all four of the elements, it can have three or more, and it's gonna be considered an ADU. So I guess I just didn't feel that was needed to be in there.
Because of redundancy?
Yes, yeah. Pretty much all that verbiage is in the definition of accessory dwelling unit, with the difference being three or more, not four.
Okay, and you're taking, let's see, I'm kind of going back up here, but, so red is the original definition?
Correct.
Without changes?
Yeah.
They're the ones that you're proposing to address, and then black is?
That and green is the proposed
Okay.
Verbiage, yeah.
So.
And the numbers changed because I deleted, or removed some.
Where is, let's see. Duplex, residential dwelling. Okay, so you're adding to the definition of dwelling. So our existing definition of dwelling, number six, is very short, a place to live in, a residence or house. And you're proposing expanding dwelling to a structural portion thereof providing complete and independent living, offering three or more amenities, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation, which are used in common by one or more persons with amendments. And then a change to, oh, so instead of just, we have under residential dwelling, oh, we have dwelling and residential dwelling unit, oh, so are you combining these definitions then? Are you combining definitions six and seven?
No, 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 let me just look at.
It looks like it. You're making what is now definition seven, residential dwelling unit, a subset of dwelling, so A as A.
Right. Once again, I believe it was, I'm trying to remember why I chose that, but I think it was redundancy once again.
Yeah.
Yes, that's right, that's why I put A in instead of seven, that makes sense.
Duplex is unchanged, and multifamily is unchanged.
Because we have, yeah, dwelling defined and residential defined.
And then on accessory dwelling units, red is the existing definition. Black is unchanged.
Correct.
And this section two is from the ordinance itself, not from the definitions?
That's, that's original, yeah. In G, yeah, provisions, yeah, that's original section two, that stays as it is.
I didn't realize this, so this is all unchanged, everything in black, right?
Correct.
I didn't realize this about B, that mobile homes may not have an ADU. I wonder if that will stand up in court? Oh, that's. Mobile homes are manufactured housing, so this is, like, so, there we go. This is where the words are not necessarily cross-referenced consistently. All right, so here we have on the screen up here, the word mobile home. Nowhere in our definitions, I don't think we have mobile home, we have manufactured housing. Is the definition of what we consider a mobile home.
Right, so that should be changed, right? If you wanna leave B in there, that changed mobile home with manufactured housing? Or manufactured, yeah.
So.
But the definition of the manufactured housing is in the, in the ordinance, is number 13.
Exactly. So that's what I'm saying, is that we have a definition of manufactured housing, which in the definition it states including mobile homes.
Right.
But we don't have a definition of mobile homes, so we should refer to things
We should refer to.
As manufactured housing.
Right.
Make this red with, how do we do this, strike through somewhere in here? Well, red is to be changed, and then I'll just put green for. Yeah, so I think we need a, kind of a read-through to check for consistency of language.
Right.
Because then here, like, can you see, we have structure, which I think we have addition, I think we have structure. We do not, oh, we did, 27.
Yes, we have 27, this is structure, yeah.
All right, and then, yeah. Dwelling unit. We've got dwelling unit, principal dwelling unit.
Then if I buy one of those prefab structures to put, you know, my junk for, I mean, my tools for gardening and things like that, is that considered here as an structure?
As an accessory structure.
Accessory structure, then I have to come and have a permit for that?
Correct.
Okay.
So then we have this down here in I on the screen. Principal dwelling unit. Which we don't have a definition of principal dwelling.
Right.
Principal residence, we don't have a definition of that. Legal domicile, we don't have a definition of that. And do we have a definition of residence?
Residential.
Residence.
But no residential.
Principal place of residence.
No residence.
We don't have a definition of that. I believe that the ADU ordinance was adopted before I came on, but I believe there is a, there was a state model ordinance that they worked off of, that these definitions came from, which is why there's some language in this ADU part.
That isn't in our definition.
When they put this in, they didn't update our definitions to adequately cross-reference it. So that's why we have these like primary dwelling structure, what is that? One-family dwelling.
So primary should probably be under number seven, residential dwelling unit, and then it's got duplex and multifamily. Should that have one that says?
Sorry, you said primary should be under number seven, residential? Maybe, I don't know, yeah, I mean, that sounds intuitive. Primary, right, we just, did I just read that, primary dwelling unit, not principal?
Principal, do you?
No, we have one family dwelling. Principal dwelling unit, principal residence. Principal residence, single family dwelling. Residential living unit. Single family dwelling, okay, I got that one already.
Change mobile home to manufactured.
Oh, is that showing up again?
Yeah, on B, yeah.
Or, you know, or is it adequate that our manufactured references mobile homes?
I think you're, I think we're into, uh, repeating yourself, yeah?
Yeah.
I think you already changed that on another section.
Now, so, my original. Dwelling unit is a manufactured home. And then they added on to it, they didn't add accessory dwelling units per se, but they added on to it. So the main structure of my house is mobile home. Right, and then the question is, now that you have more than a mobile home, could you now have an ADU? Or are you prohibited from having an ADU because your original structure was a mobile home? Un- undefined.
Right, yeah.
You know, if you have a mobile home and you add a teeny little bit, then can you then add an ADU to it? Or are you forever prohibited from having an ADU on a mobile home? I think if, me, you should be able, like, I don't see why mobile homes are prohibited from having ADUs.
Yeah.
Honestly, it seems discriminatory to me, but.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't see how it could stand up in court of law, honestly, but. That's what our ordinances say, um. I think there's a lot of things in our ordinances that probably don't stand up to a court of law. But I know nothing, cause I'm not a lawyer nor a judge. Do we wanna keep this thing about mobile homes can't have ADUs?
I don't think so, I think you should come out.
Do we wanna cross-reference that with the state ordinance? Why did the state model ordinance have it in there? If that is from the state model ordinance, is that, or is that something that the planning board made up on their own, I don't think, I don't know. We do have a definition of condominium, I think.
Yeah, for sure.
These are roughly alphabetical? Kind of, not totally. Residential dwelling unit snuck in there, extra dwelling. Do we have a definition of condominium? We do not have a definition of condominium, I don't see it.
There is a word condominium in the, in number twenty-eight.
In twenty-eight?
Yeah.
In subdivision.
Well, but I'd say, uh, for the future, for a sale, rent lease condominium. So division of a lot, tract or parcel of land into two more lots sites.
Yeah, so there's another word that we reference, but we don't have the definition for, what is a condominium? What defines a condominium, I think our ordinances say you can have. In residential areas, a condominium, right, it's a, or you can have duplex. Oh, we do have a definition of duplex, building which houses two separate dwelling units. But we don't have definition of condominium. What do you think the definition of duplex means?
Duplex?
Duplex is here.
I don't know how to define it, but it's, uh, it's one building that houses two homes.
So the definition reads a building, which A being singular.
Right.
A building which houses two separate dwelling units.
And a dwelling unit is a place to live, a residential house, so it's got two of those in one building. That's, well, I would say it's correct.
What defines one building, what if you have two giant houses connected by a breezeway? Is that one building?
I would think it would be.
I would think it would be, what's the difference between two giant houses connected to a breezeway? And a house with an accessory dwelling unit connected by a breezeway?
Uh, say that again?
What's the difference between a duplex and an ADU?
Well, by definition, the ADU has to share a wall.
So does the duplex. The duplex has to be one building, so it has to have, that by definition, it has to have a shared wall.
So then a breezeway wouldn't, wouldn't constitute a duplex.
But what building?
Having a breezeway wouldn't constitute it being a duplex, it would be two homes.
Well, if a breezeway is totally open, I don't know.
To share a breezeway, but not a wall.
I do know, just down the road from me, on Ross Farm Road, um, it used to be, uh, Tom, um. Uh, he built, he built his own house and he built an ADU and is connected by a breezeway, and at the time. Tom O'Reilly. That was when this ADU thing was happening here in planning board. And his house was held up as the model of what an ADU is. And it does not have a common wall, it has a breezeway. Is a roof a common wall?
No.
Is a floor a common wall?
And I don't know how long that wall has to be either, is it? Six inches?
Is a railing a common wall, if you put a railing between the two buildings, does that constitute a wall, you know?
Tax wise, is, is any benefit to have, uh, two houses in, well. Two houses in the same lot with a breezeway, tax wise. Each, each house has to pay their own taxes, right, you cannot have one tax for the whole. I mean, uh.
Correct.
I don't know anything about that.
I think it's one tax bill for the whole thing, one tax bill for the property. You don't pay by the house, you pay by the property, so it's.
If it's a duplex, you would have to have two tax bills.
Do you get two tax?
I think so, yeah, cause you, you, your tax bill is property and building.
Okay.
So it would be, it would have to be.
It would have to be, would it have to be, two tax bills? I don't think so. I don't know, but I think ADUs are.
Cause if, if you own half the house, I am half the house, I'm not on the hook for all the taxes, I can't be, you're, I mean. It has to be, you have to pay the tax, you're to share the taxes, it has to be billed to you, in my, yeah. So I would assume if, if it's common property, there's a certain value for the land.
Right.
Then there's a certain value for each.
Dwelling unit.
Part of the duplex, generating each owner's tax bill.
And now one more question?
So, yeah, breezeway, breezeway, there is no way to. Say that they have a, a shared common wall, unless. That breezeway is owned by one of the units only. Then, at the end of it, you could say that's the shared wall. And that would just be, you know, the size of a door plus.
Right. Same with the, if there's two garages side by side, right? If it was, the common wall is the garage, is, you know, your, your house is here, you have your garage, and then that wall is. So I'm picturing the breezeway being front to back, right, and. The common wall is, like you said, the far side of the breezeway, whichever way it goes.
You could consider that door plus its, you know, jam, the shared, uh, wall. But do you consider a door a wall?
And the other question that I, you know.
I guess you could, I guess you would, because you could have a door through the wall and the wall is just the beams.
Now, if one of the person who wants to pay or whatever the arrangement. I mean, want to get out of there and move out and sell that house. Can you sell that house as a single house? Or always has to be attached to the other person who wanna stay in his, um.
What are you, are you talking a duplex or an ADU?
No, no, the, the one that we're talking that is, uh, connected by a.
So that would be a duplex, and that would be two different properties.
Yeah, well, if it's two different properties, they have two different taxes.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
But I think the, the only way you could do it is share the value, or divide the value of the land in half if it's. If it's equal, huh?
And I, I think ADUs are not separate taxed, I think they're.
That's right, that's all property, yeah.
Duplexes don't have to be, um, the mirror image of each other, they could be completely different.
Right, yeah.
There's nothing saying they have to be the same.
Right. Is it one big building that?
Doesn't everyone build a duplex? Like, why build an ADU, build a duplex?
Right, you gotta have a common wall anyway, so.
Duplexes are allowed, but the ordinances state anything beyond a duplex is.
Yeah.
Unit, right, and they don't allow those. But why, so ADU has all kinds of restrictions, size, well, size is the big one.
Right.
It's like, under a thousand square feet is like eight, I don't know.
Is there duplex restrictions, I haven't read, no, no, no.
It just says duplex, that, that's the definition of duplex.
Right.
It's a one sentence definition.
But is there somewhere in the zoning that?
No.
No?
That references duplex has to have.
You could build.
Three acre the land or.
You could build the giantest two buildings you wanted and connect them and call it a duplex, the way I read it.
Right.
What is the definite, what's the difference between a condominium and a duplex?
You know, I, I was trying to remember, cause I looked up condominium, trying to figure out where the word came from and, and what it meant. And I draw a blank at the moment, but.
I know nothing. A condominium does not need to be a duplex, but a duplex can be a condominium. That's kind of what I'm wondering. And, right. Duplex is two, condominium is two or more. We probably don't have a definition for condominium, but. Any condominium is more than, or three or more, if it's less than, if it's only two, it's a duplex, I don't know.
The jo- the building or complex of building containing number of individually owned apartment or houses. And second is the joint control of countries or territory affairs by other countries.
Uh, so here in ADU, I'm reading right here, um, that it is, for ADUs, it's one property, one thing. As far as taxes, the principal dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit shall not be separated in ownership. So it's one owner for an ADU.
So that changes the difference between that and the duplex.
Yes.
But could I?
But our definition.
Anyone in duplex, the, the whole thing? Yeah, right, why not? But it'd be two ta- it'd be two properties, two tax bills.
The duplex doesn't say anything about a common wall, it just says a building. I don't know, I feel like you could do with.
Yeah.
ADU has all these restrictions, and duplex is a one sentence definition, that you can pretty much do whatever you want with, the way I read it.
Well, you can build a duplex on a open ground wall. Yeah, and you communicate it, yeah.
Totally.
Yeah.
I, I think so.
Yeah.
Unless that would say sorry.
If you build, say for example, you, the ADU is more complicated because they have more restriction. And you need to have a, your son or whatever, your daughter, you can build a duplex, yeah. And your older family, I mean, your kid is gonna be in one of the duplex, and you and your wife or partner, whatever. Is gonna be in, in the other one, and you avoid all the problem with the ADU. Yeah, I mean, uh. And if you wanna communicate it, is it just one door, interim?
And I guess the, the thing people might not want to make a duplex from is that. Basically, their taxes are double, while accessory dwelling unit would not double your taxes. I don't, is that the case, I don't know. I assume it'd be close to that. Yeah. Yeah, close to double. I know. The, the land value wouldn't change, and that would split, but the. The house value would essentially double. Yeah, ADU has all these restrictions, um.
But duplex doesn't.
Duplex doesn't, ADU. Shall not exceed eight hundred square feet. The ADU shall have two parking spaces. The ADU shall make provision for water and sewage, uh, it's still gonna be for the duplex. The ADU shall be limited to two bedrooms and two persons per bedroom maximum. So for, a maximum of four duplex, you could build as big as your lot can handle.
Two eight bedroom, six baths.
Yeah.
Duplexes.
Two mansions.
Yeah.
Uh, ADU shall match in design, your duplex has no matching requirement.
Yeah.
Right? Aesthetic appearance, there's nothing in that in duplex.
Yeah.
If you build a duplex, it's supposed to be two families living, right? I mean, in thinking, but we have the restriction on the land. There is to be two acres per residential building. Then how much land can you build a duplex?
Right now, they don't define it.
That's the same, it's two acres, it's in the ordinance, so if we go, I'll scroll down the ordinance.
I mean, uh, no, I mean, if this is the ordinance, I can see.
The ordinance in residential, uh, let's see.
I know, I read it, yeah.
Okay, so it's Roman numeral three, which is on page nine. Land use is permitted, and then a residential, and then one location. Residential uses permitted in the town, all sections of the town, including those designated as commercial and light industrial. So you can live in commercial and light industrial, that's what that says. Two lot requirements. Frontage, any lot situated on a highway, town road or road which meets town specs. An approved subdivision shall have minimum two hundred contagious feet on such road. Lot size, B, each lot shall be a minimum of two acres per dwelling unit.
So that tells me it has to be four acres to do a duplex. Yeah, two, two acres per dwelling, if you read dwelling.
No, no, because definition seven is residential dwelling unit. And a subset of seven residential dwelling unit is duplex. Duplex is a subset of residential dwelling unit.
But a duplex is two dwellings. And you can only have one dwelling per two acres.
Yeah.
That's the way I read it. What you tell me, you need four acres to do a duplex.
Right.
Yeah, then that has to have four acres, okay.
But, but you're right, I think, Sean, that a duplex is not a single residential dwelling unit. And so, and it's just a subset that. That is a wrong.
A duplex is two.
Number three.
Residential units.
Number three, use is permitted. A, single and duplex dwellings.
For residential zone.
For residential.
But I still think you need four acres to do a duplex. Because you've got two, two volumes. Per dwelling unit.
Yeah. Maybe. I wonder what a lawyer would say about it, I don't know.
He'd be putting a hat on sideways. That would be how I read it. I'm not a lawyer, even.
I can read, I can read it both ways, I guess, is what I'm getting at. I can read it that it's, it's, for a duplex, it would before, I can also read it that a duplex could be put on a two-acre lot.
So where are you saying that can be read that way? Lot requirements.
I just think, because it says per dwelling unit.
Yeah.
It doesn't say per structure, it doesn't say.
Per building.
Per building.
And that's where it's okay to have.
And that's why you would want to build an ADU, because you don't have the four acres to build a duplex or subdivide for a second house.
Exactly, right, and that's why I said the taxes would go up double. I didn't realize the land had to be double, but you're right, it does. The land has to be double and, you know, essentially the value of the home is based on square footage. So, yeah, you're basically doubling depending on the size. And I think that it's okay to put this subset, it doesn't say that a duplex is a single residential dwelling unit. It is making clear that it is a building with two dwelling units. So it's, it's put as a sub, it's not a sub, it's just bringing it up there so that for clarification as to the distinction between a single residential dwelling unit and a two separate dwelling units, they call that a duplex. So I think the location of it is fine, it's not right.
So is anyone allowed to put a second kitchen in their house?
A second kitchen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't that leave your house a duplex?
I don't believe it does.
If you had two floors and each floor had all four components.
Then you would have a duplex. Is it divided anywhere? You don't have it's divided.
Just by stairs.
Yeah.
I was thinking, this is how my grandmother lived, not here at the company, but. It was some house that the main floor was the main floor and the bottom floor was converted.
Right.
Added a kitchen, it already had a bathroom, they added a kitchen.
Yeah.
Made one of the rooms a bedroom and then it was basically a house that became a duplex.
So the question is, is the second one eight hundred square feet or less? Because then it's an ADU. If it's more than eight hundred, then it would be a duplex, right?
Yeah, so I guess it kind of gets back to my question, can someone put a second kitchen in their house? I don't know that you could. That would be making your house a duplex, or it seems to me it would.
Well, like I said, either duplex or ADU, depending on the size.
Depending on the size.
Yeah.
Well, I told you something, if you were Jewish, Jews, or Orthodox, real Orthodox, you have to kitchen, to sink.
But they would need three or more. You can't just add a kitchen. Right.
But most floors already have, you know.
Yeah, you'd have to have.
If you have the other things.
You'd have to have three or more, for the new definition, you'd have to have three or more to justify it being a dwelling and then you'd figure out the size to decide whether it's an ADU or a duplex.
And then, you know, the one that comes to mind is, there's sleeping, eating, cooking sanitation. So we know what sanitation is. It's sewage, right? It's not defined, but I'm guessing we're relying on state definitions there. Maybe san, maybe these, these four, so if it's all hinging on these four things, do each of these need to be explicitly defined? Like sanitation as in toilet, shower, sink. Or toilet bath sink, some, you know. Cooking is a hot pot, you know. What defines a kitchen? What defines cooking? Eating?
Right.
What does that mean? What does that mean?
You can stand and eat.
Yeah. Sleeping, what does that mean? You can throw a mattress on the floor. What makes a bedroom a bedroom, right? This isn't a bedroom, but it's got four walls and a door. Could you sleep in here? Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the state defines a bedroom as it has to have a closet. If a, I believe, like code.
They use a closet.
This has a closet. If you don't have a closet, it doesn't count as a bedroom. When they do your assessment, it counts as like a room that's not a bedroom. So you say like, my house has four bedrooms because each, it was built and they all have closets, but if you took the closet out, you'd say I have three bedrooms and an office.
And on that topic, I don't know if it's written in ordinances, but by real estate standards, they can only list the number of bedrooms based on your septic system load. Can say how many people can live in that and therefore it limit, and you're allowed two people per bedroom. Is standard real estate code. Whether that's state code or zoning ordinance that we have, I do not know. But that is real estate code.
I guess kind of what I'm getting at wholly is, I'm glad we're having this discussion. I do wish Curtis and Brian are here and hopefully they'll be here at the next meeting. But I think it's messier than we think it is. And I think it's harder to define clearly, consistently, well, and accurately so that it's enforceable. That's ultimately what we want. It's something that our residents and citizens can understand and that is enforceable.
No, I totally agree with you and hence why when you consulted that lawyer and she said.
Not a lawyer, just consultant.
A consultant. Well, she wasn't, she was, she wasn't a lawyer?
No, she's a background. She's a professional consultant for municipalities, for land use.
Yeah, or she said it was a mess, and it is. So yeah, if it went to a court of law, we'd be like, like the town Conway where it's, you know, sign ordinances, it's a mess. You're not going to be able to fight that and win in a court of law.
And to me, it's pay now or pay later, like, you know. Hiring a consultant.
But we've already identified a lot of little things that we should be able to come up with. I mean, if we need to define sanitation.
Let's define sanitation.
Define, you know. And I think if we pick up those things and try to get as many done as we can for the next town meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we'll be all.
Progress, yeah, right. Progress and well.
I agree, and I'm always in favor of trying to save the taxpayers' money. All of ours and all of our neighbors. At the same time, I know I don't have the expertise. I don't know if you all do.
Yeah, no, I don't, but at least this little we're doing definitely makes things better.
I agree.
And I think between all of us, with Brian and Curtis, that if we all pretty much firmly agree on it, then it's a pretty good chance, we're headed in the right direction, you know?
Yeah, because we've got a whole bunch of different ideas. And, right, if we all agree.
But if we get pushed back from one or two, then we can pump the brakes and we can dive a little deeper into that one.
I mean, maybe we have to do like a homework and get definitions for all the words that are, we pointed out in this meeting and sort of pass, you know, the to everybody in the board, you know. Write next time, definition for this, 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 and then it will be easier and faster than started to think here about the definition.
Yeah, and start plugging them in.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a way that we can have all of us have access to a single document that we're all editing?
I don't think that we should all editing. I think that one person editing, but we should have.
All right, we can all put comments in it.
But maybe that one document, the rest of us can do and then have one offer of it.
Well, if we have the, if we all, everybody has a word, you can go to, for example, let's say, zoning ordinance, right? And if you click in comments, yeah, you can put a comment that can be read by anyone. You know, if you need help with the, I will be, I will help you, I will direct it, you know.
Right, we can all be commentators and Sean will be the final one to.
Yeah, of course, yeah, yeah. You can even print the comments, yeah. Then if we bring, you know, like this paper with all the comments, I mean.
And essentially, as you, we can start with the definitions, but we're going to have to essentially re-rate the whole ordinances. We're going to have to add lots of words to the definitions that are currently not there. And, yeah, re-rate, re-change the ordinances so that they only use the definitions, not some sort of.
I do, if you don't know how, one of my kids, I think, could.
In Word, I know how to do it in Google Docs, but.
Yeah, I think Google Docs is probably the one to use, I would say.
I can help you with Word too.
Okay, thank you. Do we want to continue? Do we want to call it? Do we want to read through the definitions? What I'm kind of, we can call it. We can also continue. Whether we call it or continue, I would propose either now or at the next meeting that we read through every definition from start to finish.
Yeah, we all have this. I think if we all redo it and we just highlight.
Inconsistencies or.
Inconsistencies, then we'd see and come back at it.
Yeah, I mean, I'll start, I'll put mine in Google Doc and I'll send it to you and then you can concatenate it or whatever. But we should have, yeah, one, one Google Doc that we can all comment for, so you know, if you don't mind setting that up or having someone send it up.
Google Drive, Google Drive is easy to, do you know?
I'm familiar with that, yeah. I'll probably do it that way.
I've already, yeah, I've already got mine in Google Drive, so it'd be easy.
Okay. Sounds like a plan.
And, yeah, I'd say we can make a motion and then we'll all go through that. Yeah, if that's done early, I'll start editing early.
I think it's a good talk.
One thing, can you send that, what he wrote?
Yes.
Because I would like to read it, you know.
Well, that should automatically be added to the comments, then. I will send it. I thought I had it, I probably didn't.
Oh, okay, yeah, cool. I will send it. All right, any other business? Hearing none? Jim, I think you got it. All those in favor? We are adjourned.